Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 25th. It is 7:04 PM. This is the regular meeting, Town Council. Will everyone please rise for the point of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just for the chair's satisfaction. Mr. Feldman, can you hear us? Can you unmute yourself through? See that you can hear us?
Uh, yes, I can hear you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we are all set with that. All members of Town Council are present with the exception of Councilmembers O'Rourke and Reed. I second consent calendar. Be passed as presented. If there's no objection, Member Reed is just signed on. He is here virtually. I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. If there's no objection, hearing no objections, passed as presented. I ask that communication items A through I be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Moving on to public participation. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate this evening? Who's in Town Council chambers? All good. All right, is there anyone online that would like to participate during public participation? Please remember to unmute your microphone. If you have called in, it is star six on your phone if you've dialed in. Or select the microphone with the red line through it on a tablet, computer, or virtual meeting application. Once again, is there any member of the public who's here online that would like to participate at our meeting? Please remember to unmute yourself, star six if you've dialed in. Or if you're on your tablet, computer, or cellphone via the app, please select the microphone with the red line through it. Seeing none, hearing none. Once again, anyone in Town Council chambers want to participate? Seeing none, hearing none. I'm closing public participation for the evening. We're going to move on to appointments. I move the Town Council adopt Resolution 24-044. Resolve that Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first elected appointment of Scott Redfern of 19 Partridge Drive as liaison from the town of Monroe to the Center of the Family Justice. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Union Lapelis. Scott Redfern currently sits on the Board of Directors as Center of County Justice meeting leader. First elected has appointed him to position. Mr. First elected, do you have any other discussion on this point?
Thank you. Just in my memo, you know, pursuant to Chapter Eight, Section Eight of Town Charter regarding contributions. The Town shall make no contributions to any organization or private corporation unless authorized by Connecticut general statutes. With the exception of the volunteer fire departments, no such contribution more than 500 shall be made to any organization or corporation unless the town is represented on its board by one or more members nominated thereto by the first elected approved by the council. Therefore, I hereby make the following appointment subject to the approval of Town Council. Basically, this bridges the gap for our donation to the Center of Family Justice. It supplies the ability to comply with charter when we decide to give that donation. So I hope that you approve it. This will be a great addition and help our relationship with that center when they have to do business in Monroe. So that is all. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-044, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes eight to zero. Moving on to action items. Action A, Town Council Command Finance Education Help Public Safety Matters.
Oh, we have unplanned a meeting.
Thank you. Item B, Town Council Command Planning and zoning public works, park and recreation matters. A member of Juve.
We have not met. Anything of report?
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to C, Town Council Command Legislative and Administrative Matters. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet tonight, and as you were talking, I was fishing out the agenda that we discussed. We actually discussed four matters. We discussed resolution on planning and zoning job description updates, 2024 Department of Agriculture Farmers Market Agreement. We also talked about the Stevenson Fire Engine 302, major refurbish RFP, as well as an easement agreement for 255 Monroe Turnpike, all of which reached consensus.
Thank you very much. All right, Strategic Plan Committee. We will meet April 8. Time to be determined, likely sometime in the five o'clock hour. I will confirm the room and time with the First Electman's office. That is our regular meeting of Town Council evening. I will note that the Town Council will have joint meetings for the finance concerning capital projects on April 18. That time, I am uncertain of. We will get that information to everybody well in advance of the date. All right. Item E, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee. They have not met since our last Town Council meeting. Item F, First Electman's update. Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize ahead of time for this lengthy update, but there's some things I feel that's necessary to speak to council about. So in the operations update, the asphalt plants, the asphalt plants have now opened. DPW will begin curb and drainage work as well as road paving and repair where indicated and needed. Parks and Recreation Spring Maintenance has begun at Wolf Park along with Great Hollow Lake Beach being redesigned and in the process of being fully cleaned and raked. Some drainage is to be addressed there. It's the intention to create more sitting air near the water for citizens to enjoy. And it's not on your update, but I added a venue. The homeowner fraud was launched today, so that's good news. That's been well received. Vida is very busy talking to people about that. An emergency services update, the ambulance that we had spoke about previously, the ambulance has been inspected by the state of Connecticut is now back on the road in full operation. And just in regards to the police department, which is something last minute that you guys didn't have here. We did hire, we have one lateral officer coming from West Haven. As you know, during the budget process, talking to directors and the chief, that there were two openings. I guess there were three. So we have a lateral coming from West Haven, and we have two others that were hired that will be certified by police officer standards and training in Meriden Post. One is starting in April and the other is in July. Capital Projects update, Pepper Street. There has been no further development since last council. We are working with the town attorney to set up a meeting so we can all go over some of that. Community update, just some things that I've done in the community. I had an Easter egg hunt breakfast at Carmody Grange on Saturday, March 16th. I attended, helped serve pancake breakfast and Easter egg hunt. Asked my wife to help, which she gladly did, so we flipped pancakes and enjoyed that with the kids. Michael over there was very nice to us, and we had a great, great time. Bridgeport St. Patrick's Day Parade, March 15th. I walked in representation of Monroe with other elected officials. It was well attended. Very busy. They do it down on Fairfield Avenue now, so it was an interesting event. EMS Legislative Brunch on Saturday, so March 23rd. The legislators from municipalities, mostly in the same community of governments, MetroCog, attended with the intent to discuss EMS operations and billing. It was nice to see the facility utilized from when it was constructed. Webb Mountain. Webb Mountain, there was another Easter egg hunt, and I toured the facility of Webb Mountain Discovery Zone. The event was very well attended with an interesting presentation from the Fairfield Audubon Society, featuring some native birds such as a barn owl, hawk, and a screech owl. Many citizens with their families gathered around to learn about the habitat and habits of these local species of birds and collect Easter eggs. It's always a conversation, at least it's been a conversation for several years, about grants, and this budget season is no different. So after the last meeting, last council meeting, we spoke about grants. I spoke to our HR director, who was nice enough to reach out to CCM and get some information for us in regards to grant writers of towns of our size, our demographic, our grant list, so on and so forth. So I have some information here I'd just like to bring to every, this council's attention. So Avon, the Assistant Town Manager, helps in managing and administering some of the grants. It's a secondary responsibility. The annual salary ranges from $90,000 to $126,236. Each department head handles their own grant writing. On in Avon. In Waterford, each department head handles their own grant writing. In Southbury, the Finance and Human Resources Administrator and the Project Administrator had two positions that handle grant writing. The Finance and Human Resources Administrator earns $104,500 per year. The Project Administrator earns $70,000 per year. The total grant funds awarded to the town in 2023 was $276,000 with those positions. Bethel, each department head handles their own grant writing. East Lime, each department head handles their own grant writing. And Wilton, each department head handles their own grant writing. However, there is an assistant to the first selectman called the Coordinator of Communication and Community Relations. One of the minor responsibilities of that role invokes looking through materials, identifying potential grants, and forwarding them to department heads who then decide if they would like to apply. This is a part-time position paid 54, 85 per hour, working 25 hours per week. So it looks like Wilton is kind of on the same page as what we're working with at this point. Stonington hired a grant writer at the end of 2023 and are in the process of securing grants or working through grants that were provided prior to someone being in that position. The salary range for the position is $65,087,860. The current salary being paid for the position is $70,000. And Killingley, the Economic Development Director, handles the majority of the grant writing. The wage is $51,96 per hour for 35 hours per week. Madison, each department head handles their own grant writing. Plainville, each department head handles their own grant writing. Brookfield, each department head handles their own grant writing. And in Ellington, each department handles their own grant writing. But during this information, it was brought to our attention that there is, CCM does offer grant writer assistance, which consists of the following: grant research and writing of application, expertise and knowledge available per and grants. Town can have a full-time grant writer on retainer at no charge. However, CCM does offer actual grant writing or research would be a cost at $137.50 per hour by project. The number of hours per project would be negotiated prior to start. Administration closeout and audit of grants will come at an additional cost, and that would allow the town to pursue larger, more complex applications. Competitive grants might be a conflict with other towns as the grant writer works for multiple towns, right? So if multiple towns are looking at the grant, there might be some sort of conflict, but at least we know through CCM we have this option, which is very good. Good to know. The town can branch start grant programs for particular projects. So I just wanted this council to just have a background of information from CCM so we actually look at towns of our size to see what they're doing. So we understand, right? And I think Monroe with Bill Holsworth's work and this, the new person that's going to come along, I think we have a good handle on it. And now having air support from CCM in this, if we do need it, this is a nice thing to know and have. So thank you to the HR Director and Bill Holsworth for doing that information for this council. Just real quick recognition, I saw many of you have read this. So Monroe named as one of the seven best places to live in Connecticut by World Atlas. On Monday, March 18th, I was notified that Monroe had been placed on a World Atlas list as one of the seven best places to live in Connecticut. The article noted how Monroe is a family-oriented town with award-winning schools, safe neighborhoods, beautiful parks, and a growing local economy. This is a true testament to the hard work of our town employees and our officials have done and continue to do every day, also the citizens in Monroe. You know, it's a great community, so obviously we are being recognized for being such. And that's all I have. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. We have no unfinished business this evening. The first item of your business is acceptance of pending donations that include or exceed $1,500. I move that Town Council accept a $2,000 donation from King Hyrum Lodge 12 to the Emergency Medical Services. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Lapelis. Mr. First selectman, any discussion on this?
As always, these donations are helpful in operations of these facilities and departments. So thank you again to anybody who donates. Obviously, these funds will be put to good use. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We do see a lot of donations to EMS, and they do wonderful work, and many people have very positive experiences with them. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the donation, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes eight to zero. Moving on to item B, Resolution 24-045. Men of Vice Chair.
Resolve that the Town Council hereby approves the revised job descriptions and authorizes the first selectman to implement as soon as possible. And I move that the Town Council adopt this resolution.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Lapelis. Is there a second?
Second.
My Jason Mauer, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Planning and Zoning Administrators request that the Inland Wetlands Coordinator and Zoning Wetlands Enforcement Officer jobs descriptions to be adjusted to Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer and Zoning Enforcement Officer. There is a passing place resolution on the agenda that there is a letter of opinion, I believe. No, no, we don't need a letter of opinion. We do have Bill Holsworth and our HR Director here to answer any questions. Basically, as council may remember, these positions were kind of put together. And at the time, it seemed like a great idea, and it worked. And now with the applications that are coming in to do the due diligence and doing a zoning enforcement that's needed to be done, that the community has actually desperately asked for. This is a recommendation moving forward to do so. So if there's any questions, Mr. Hersch is here to answer any of those.
Any other discussion, Mr. Chair? Councilmember Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did discuss this pretty intensely in LNA to talk about because this was a change that was very recently made to combine these positions. The biggest questions that I had, one was the person who's currently in the position, which kind of position would they fill? So they will be the zoning enforcement and the zoning officer, and the inland wetlands position will be the one that's open and set to be filled. We talked about the salary aspect of this and that we're basically separating an entire portion out of the job, and then it's still going to be the same amount of hours, same salary. And it was assured to me that there is enough of a backlog, really, that there is even taking out the inland wetlands section of it. There is enough zoning work to fill in all of that time, as well as there's enough inland wetlands that hasn't been getting to justify the full-time position on that side as well. And then the other aspect that I discussed, and fortunately, our HR Director had already asked these questions and had the answers ready. It just didn't make sense to have one person as enforcement and one person reviewing all of the petitions that came in, both inland wetland and zoning review person and inland wetland enforcement person. That question had been asked of our current zoning and wetlands administrator, and their view was no, it's better to have somebody who has seen the project from start to finish on each side of it, so that zoning is purely working with zoning, wetlands is purely working with wetlands. And that would be their preference on how to move forward with the positions. But we did discuss this in pretty great detail, and there was, fortunately, the answers were already there, so we were able to pass this on so unanimously.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just one question. I just want to assure that the individual currently filling the planning and zoning position meets the new requirements.
Goodbye.
Is that a fair assumption on my part?
Miller break.
I'm sorry?
Frank.
You're back there. I'm sorry. I didn't know where you were.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
All right. Hearing nothing else. All in favor, and if the adopted Resolution 24-045, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
I had an aye drawn up.
Thank you. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes eight to zero. I'm just gonna, Frank, I'm just gonna do like the first. I'm gonna, we're gonna move around the agenda a little bit for our guests. We're gonna move on to Resolution 24-047, which is Stevens Fire Struct. And Vice Chair.
Oh, that's good. Thank you. I moved, I moved that the Town Council adopt Resolution 24-047. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Engine 302 refurb contract and any associated documents by and between the Gowans Night Company for the Stevenson Fire Engine 302 major refurbish project.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second. Second by Donaldan Wales. Mr. First Select.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So earlier this year, the town issued a request proposal, RFP, for the major refurbish of Stevenson Fire Engine 302. We received one bid from the Gowans Night Company, who has the capability to convert Engine 302 from a fire engine to a rescue engine. This conversion will replace the body of the engine, E302, and will allow the fire department to carry all the tools they need for rescue-type incidents such as motor vehicle accidents. Once the conversion has been made, the apparatus will give the town many years of service. Stevenson Fire will be keeping R320 in service until E302 is completed, upon which they will be selling the rescue to the vendor who is completing the conversion. I went to the Board of Finance to check to see if there was any bonding owed and things of that nature, so this project was due by the Finance Department, who confirmed that there was no debt on either piece of apparatus. This agreement has been reviewed by our town attorney, who provided the attached opinion letter. However, I think there are some recent things that have transpired, and that, and the town attorney is here to help me along with that. So take it away, Mr. Town Attorney.
Does anybody have an objection with me standing here and speaking to the council? I know there's a few.
Objection.
Basically, the back of my Um, so the opinion letter that I did provide with the packet was was prepared during an initial part of the negotiations that I was having with the principals of Gowans Night in conjunction with Stevenson Fire, Mr. Giordano, and the First Selectman's Office. We had a lot of communication on this. And since the time that I drafted the letter, you also have in your packet, did notice there were a couple supplemental pages that had to do with the negotiations that I was attempting to achieve. I'm happy to report that with respect to the warranty, Gowans Night did have their attorney review my suggested addition of a reasonable standard with relation to their sole discretionary judgment as they proposed it with regards to the warranty, which I thought was a fair and reasonable request. And it conceded to that request. And so we do have that part of my the one issue that was raised in my opinion letter has been addressed to our satisfaction. The second issue with regards to limiting the surcharge, again, in my conversations with Mr. Giordano, which was very helpful, and Gowans Night were able to hone in on the concerns that the manufacturer had with respect to proposed and anticipated increased costs of steel that would go into the manufacturing. Again, my understanding of this transaction is that this is a we had one response to the RFP. This is a specialized vendor. The town is comfortable with using this vendor. They're comfortable with their work. The vendor is very busy. They're understaffed. And if we don't get into contract with them now to get in line on the production line, which is why this project is not starting until November, we can't lock in our pricing. And as a result of the production not commencing, Gowans has indicated early in the original proposed contract that there was this language that said that if essentially there was a dollar increase in their costs of purchasing materials, that that would result in an 8% increase in the cost to the town or more, which is an interesting term. And so certainly, and I want to thank Mr. Giordano and his his team for bringing that to our attention early on in the process. Certainly, they identified that as a problematic and concerning term, as did the First Selectman as well. And so there were two options essentially that we have. The new materials, there was an agreement that they would cap the increase basically dollar for dollar, but no more than 5%. Or the town can choose to pay in full for the cost of the vehicle repairs upfront. And certainly, I don't think I have to explain to the few attorneys and other very intelligent people on council what the risks are associated with doing that. I know this company's been around a long time. I have no reason to believe that there is any trouble on the horizon, but we've all lived long enough to know that anything could happen. And so with that being said, the, we have an agreement that dollar for dollar or 5% cap and certainly still have the option with council. So chooses to pay in full. My recommendation would not be to pay in full. My recommendation would be the dollar for dollar increase. And again, it's not a long, long period of time, and the hope is that the increase won't be too substantial. But I think based on my conversations with Mr. Giordano and his team, the First Selectman's Office, I think everybody was in agreement that the 5% cap, dollar for dollar, was a fair and equitable and reasonable addition to the contract and limits the town's exposure. And certainly, I would recommend that we move forward in that regard.
Thank you. Frank, do we need to adjust the motion anyway, or to incorporate the cap of 5% dollar for dollar or the reasonable standard that was added?
I have, and my packet included, that was here, those pages. So we're just gonna, I don't think we have to adjust the motion at all, because the contract, as I deem it to be presented to council, includes those revisions.
Okay. And everybody's under that understanding, too. Okay. Are there any other questions or just? Mauer.
First off, I just want to thank our town attorney on the negotiation here. The, I was extremely concerned about that 8% or more language that you were talking about, especially because in my reading of that, it would be that if there's a 1% increase, legs could have gone for 8%. There was no dollar for dollar up to 8% or more. So I had some major reservations there to the point that I would have said, take the risk, pay it, if we're stuck with that, pay it upfront and take the risk over taking that other risk. So thank you for your hard work on this, because I think the contract that we have here is significantly better than what was originally being presented. Couple of very quick questions. The price and then the trade-ins. The price is prior to the trade-ins, correct? So then after the trade-ins, it basically becomes around $395,000, correct?
The chief is here. He could probably speak to some of that to help us through the little details. He knows the numbers forwards and backwards on this, so.
Yeah. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Here you go.
Sorry to put you on the hook, chief.
That's fine. One thing that happened with it, I can get you the exact numbers. It's more than officially bonded for the truck. So the fire company has decided and voted on to to make up the difference in that amount. So the total purchase, when it's all said and done with the trade-in, This difference in that compared to what we bonded, which I believe was $430,000 even, that $14,971, the fire company has approved through the membership to pay that additional.
The, so the $450,000 is after the trading?
It is.
Okay.
And just to answer your question, because I know the chief has put on the spot. Quick, the number he just read off is close to the number in the contract, but there was a couple of adjustments that were made post. Would they answer your question generally, conceptually? Yes.
Okay, it's after the trade-in. And then just on the trade-in value that we're getting here, for the value of the truck that we are trading in, do we feel that we could get a better price for that going out to market and just selling it? Or is this at a point where it's like, sure, take this off our hands for 50?
For $57,000.
For $57,000.
We will not be trading that vehicle in until the whole project's done.
Right.
So would that be in approximately a year and a half to go? We think it's a very good price.
Okay, beautiful.
It's an older vehicle that the town bought that as a demo a number of years ago. It was scheduled originally to be refurbished, and as we looked into it, we did not think it was a good move to refurb this truck and still keep it for the number of years we probably get out of it.
That answers my questions. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chair.
When I read Attorney Lido's opinion, I thought we were going to come in and vote contrary to his opinion. I'm glad that these adjustments were made. It has assuaged my concerns.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to just make a little comment to the fire department. They've been working hard to take these apparatus, put them together, and make it less liability as far as costs and upkeep on the town. So I've said it a few times before, and it's kind of humorous. Firemen have a hard time getting rid of their toys. And the fact that you guys are working hard to make the good decisions and, and, and be reasonable in what you need. There's also going to be a ladder truck sale coming up and things of that nature. And it's hard to walk away from a big, beautiful ladder truck. But the fact that you guys have been looking at that as far, from a usage standpoint, what you really do need, that's very helpful for us, especially come budget time. So thank you for doing that for the citizens and taxpayers and it's just impressive. I, for a lot of years, you always saw more and more and more. And now you guys are realizing that you can work with certain things. So that's a great move. So thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a vote on every, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-047, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none passes eight to zero. Moving on to item E, Resolution 24-048. Oh yeah. None, Vice Chair.
Sorry, okay. I move that the town council adopt Resolution 24-048. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe that certain easement from the town of Monroe to 255 Monroe Turnpike LLC over that real property more particularly described as A and portion of Spring Hill Road discontinued by town of Monroe to be combined with lot 66. On a map entitled 255 Monroe Turnpike, Monroe, Connecticut, property survey and topographic survey drawing number SV1 dated April 26, 2023, revised February 7, 2024, prepared by VHB Weathersfield, Connecticut.
There's a motion to adopt the resolution as written in our memo, which is Resolution 24-048. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Mauer. Mr. First Selectman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So previously council approved the discontinuance of Spring Hill Road extension. During the review of the parcel by the incoming town, it was revealed that a small portion of the property remained unresolved. In order for the town to move forward, they are requiring a said parcel be resolved prior to committing to further development. This matter has been reviewed by land use attorney, Vin Marino, has provided the attached letter of opinion and also the, our town attorney is here to discuss that matter further. So again, take it away, Mr. Town Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. We have Attorney Marino on the line as well in case of any questions. You have a very straightforward opinion letter from Attorney Marino. He, his office or he and I and along with, along with the property owners attorney, Mr. Kevin Crusadian have been in communication over the last minute or so regarding a resolution to this problem. And as you see in Attorney Marino's letter, as you may recall, essentially in the nineties, when, when Lenin was reconstructed, there were various parcels that somewhat fell through the cracks with respect to the state. They are not in the business of owning non-contiguous miscellaneous parcels of property. So in, in August of last year, they quickly linked those parcels to the town. And those parcels are located on a number of parcels that Attorney Marino and I are working on a resolution that will be coming to this council to rectify those issues. But in light of the ongoing project, which is at the site of the future Starbucks, the underlying issues with respect to this very small parcel were causing problems with respect to the keeping that piece contiguous in order to have a valid and legal lease of that entirety of that property. So as a result, while we work out a resolution that will resolve the true ownership of these parcels and there are at least four of them that we know about, that we're, we're making sure, we want to make sure there's a full investigation to come to council with all of them at one fell swoop. Obviously in order to do something like that, it has to be a town meeting and we want to make sure that we do it appropriately with the proper resources and make sure that, you know, we kind of get the most bang for our buck if we're going to do something like that. And but at the time being, we thought that this option would be the most appropriate option right now. And I do think it's a good option. It is something that Attorney Marino worked hard on to negotiate with Attorney Crusadian on this. We did make some adjustments to the proposed easement that you have and the town's benefit. They were accepted by Attorney Crusadian, his client. And what we're proposing to council, we believe is in the best interest of the town moving, moving this forward.
Thank you. This will, this will allow continuing or the beginning of construction.
Correct, correct. This essentially has been the whole.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mauer.
A comment for the benefit of our council members. One thing we discussed in LNA was where on this map we're talking about. And if you look at the map, it's, there's a little marker A with the box going out. It's that little triangle where Spring Hill Road 91 layout meets the discontinued part of Spring Hill road and that little curve. So just that little triangle of land that's marked A, because I had a little bit of trouble finding it before that.
Where the, sorry, somewhere the old house was?
Yeah.
That's the land.
That's the whole land. This small portion we're talking about is
approximately 660 square feet.
Okay. And so it's
It's very small.
Thank you.
Hearing no other discussion. I'm calling for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-048, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none passes eight to zero. Thank you, Attorney Marino. Thank you, Attorney Lito for all your work regarding this matter.
Great, we appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, may I be excused?
You are excused.
Thank you very much. All have a good night.
Thanks. You too.
Have a great night.
All right, moving back to item C, Resolution 24-046. Manabas Chair.
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 24-046. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the 2024 Department of Agriculture's Farmers Market Agreement and any associated documents by and between the Connecticut Department of Agriculture to certify the 2024 Monroe's Farmers Market as a certified Connecticut grown farmers market.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Connecticut Department of Agriculture requires the completion of their Farmers Market Agreement to certify the Monroe Farmers Market as a certified Connecticut grown Farmers Market. This is consistent with prior years. Kelly Plunkett, who coordinates the operation, has advised that we comply with all the requirements contained in this document. This agreement has been reviewed or a town attorney who provided attached opinion letter.
And you know, any other discussions?
Now, just a very, very large thank you to Kelly Plunkett and the whole Farmers Market team and all of our farmers who continue to not only provide a great product, to throw this product and this service for this community. It's just a wonderful thing to have in town and I wholeheartedly endorse this.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, just to to kind of also say kind of along the lines of Councilman Mauer, it's probably part of why Monroe is in the top seven places to live because we have things like that that go on. So yeah, thank you to Ms. Plunkett and everybody involved in the farmers as well. It's it's great to go there in the summertime and get fresh produce and vegetables and things of that nature. So thank you.
Any other discussion? None. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-046, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none passes eight to zero. Moving on to item F, I move the town council enter executive session adding the following individuals. Allison Feldman, Terry Rooney, Frank Lito. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ben Duba. This executive session is to discuss pending litigation regarding tax appeals for numerous properties which are illustrated on our agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of going to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none passes eight to zero. We are going to an executive session at some 4:30 PM. I ask the First Selectman shut down the recording and that's it. All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 7:50. Town council returns from executive session. There were no votes cast during the executive session. Moving on to our item F to consider an act upon resolutions to settle pending litigation. I move the town council adopt the following resolution. Resolutions 24-09, 24-050, 24-051, 24-052, 24-053, 24-054 and 24-055, which settles pending litigation with the following properties. 391 Main Street, 401 Main Street, 418 Main Street, 440 Main Street, 605 Main Street, 1 Pepper Street and 5 Pepper Streets. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Second by Donaldin Wales. This was discussed during executive session. Does anyone want to say anything else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mauer.
I think the phrase should be public. So
I'm glad it came around.
Just to our, our staffer, Justin, he just did a really great job with, with these and coming to fair resolutions and just give credit where credit is due. He, he really did a great job.
As well as our town. Thank you very much.
I said I'll give.
Frank did a better job.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting said resolutions for settling tax appeals for the before listed properties, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none passes eight to zero. There is no second public participation as there are no unfinished businesses of unfinished business. There are no unfinished business of new business. I'm adjourned this meeting at some 4:30 PM. Everyone have a great.